Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to tonight's regularly scheduled city council meeting. This meeting is called to order. I kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll call.
Mike Bruno.
Here.
Tara Burkhart.
Here.
Mike Clements.
Here.
Becky Ruby.
Here.
Gabe Caven.
Here.
Dean Kilburg.
Here.
Craig Malodra.
Here.
Richard Marx is out.
Jean McGowan.
Here.
Robert Swanson.
Here.
I should note, and for the public's benefit too, earlier today we received an exciting email from Alderman Marx. He is en route to Missouri where his son and daughter are celebrating the birth of Alderman Marx's first grandchild, so...
Nice.
We asked him to call in, he's told me to... Well done. We begin our council meetings, folks, with the pledge of allegiance. I'd like to ask my friend Reese to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Kilburg is with us tonight, and as all of you know, when we had the administration of the oath ceremony not long ago, on the 6th of May, you were in Italy, is that correct?
Yes.
So Alderman Mussolini now is... How was the trip, good?
Yeah, we had a good time.
I bet. When did you get back?
Last Thursday.
Oh, so you're over the jet lag and all that good stuff?
Yep.
So just Italy was part of the trip?
That was it. Well, we went through Germany, but just touched down and changed planes, but yeah, it was a good trip.
Well, welcome back.
Good weather, a lot to see.
Yeah, it's beautiful, isn't it?
Yeah.
Welcome back.
Yeah, thank you.
Tonight, we have the honor of administering the oath to Alderman Kilburg on his reelection as alderman, and it's my pleasure to invite Alderman Kilburg and any special guests he has with him tonight to take the oath of office. We're gonna get out of your way for... Are you gonna get... I can't do...
I, Dean Kilburg.
I, Dean Kilburg.
Having been elected in the office of alderman.
Having been elected in the office of alderman.
In the city of Geneva, county of Kane, of Forsyth.
In the city of Geneva, county of Kane, of Forsyth.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The Geneva Code of Ordinances.
The Geneva Code of Ordinances.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of alderman.
The duties of alderman.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
We got some good pictures of you, Dean.
Oh, great. It's hard to do.
This is going to the police department right now, in fact.
They're there, ready.
Congratulations, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, our next item is to recognize my good friend, a junior from Geneva High School, Reese Gosain, right? Reese, coming up to the podium, big guy. I don't think anyone on the dais knows why we're recognizing this gentleman tonight, do you? Well, of course you do. Anyone else? I don't know, 'cause all you people hang out together, all the smart people. Mr. Clerk, do you know why we're recognizing Reese?
I do not.
Reese, you have some special guests with you this night, don't you?
Yes.
Would you like to introduce all your fans?
We have my grandfather right here.
Hi, Grandpa.
And then my mom, my dad, my sister Mina, and my grandmother.
Wonderful. Look at that. We saw you walking up, we were having a meeting there, and "Grandpa, you look like my dad." I thought, "My god, my father's here. Alderman Clements is gonna test it." I thought, "Oh, my god, I thought I'm in trouble again." So Reese, you're 16 or 17?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. When was your birthday?
December 16th.
Okay, man. You're a junior.
Yes.
Things are going well?
So far.
That's an understatement, isn't it? Ladies and gentlemen, every year, 1.8 million students take the ACT. 1.8 million.
Yeah, 36.
And only 1,000 earn a perfect score. And you're among those 1,000, aren't you?
Yes.
1.7 million students take the SAT every year. 1.7 million. Only 300 students earn a perfect score. What was your score?
A perfect 1,600.
How's that going for you? Perfect on both tests.
Amazing.
I misspelled ACT. So are you a math guy, too? Well, obviously you're a math guy.
Yeah, I'm on the high school math team.
What's the percentage of those who get a perfect score out of those who take the test on the ACT? Do you know?
The ACT, I'm not sure. The SAT, I think, is .02 percent.
Yeah, pretty good. .017 percent for the ACT. Do you know anyone else who has received a perfect score on both tests?
Not personally.
But I trust you've been on Facebook looking, searching?
I saw a news article from somewhere, but I don't remember where.
Did you feel confident going into the tests?
Fairly. I'll be honest, the 1,600 wasn't a complete surprise, more just disbelief.
So which... This is almost an unfair question, but which was more difficult, the math or the... What is the other part of the test? Verbal.
For me, more the, I guess, like, English reading/writing part, but I guess not.
Is that because of the English teacher you had?
No. Yeah.
So you take the test. How long does it take to get the results for the ACT?
I think two to three weeks, I forget for sure.
So two to three weeks expire. You get these via email now, don't you?
Yeah, we get a link to the website to check it out on.
You checked it out, it's like, whoa.
I think my mom saw the scores before I did, actually.
What did mom say?
Whoa. She said a lot worse than that.
Yeah, I can imagine. So then you receive the news.
Yes.
You're a humble guy. You didn't brag about it, per se, but I'm sure your friends asked you. How did you do, Reese?
I was around some friends at the time, so they found out then.
Are they still your friends?
Debatable.
So you told everybody I got a 36.
Yeah, kind of.
What did you say?
More just that, again, I didn't really go around telling many people, but when it came up, yeah, that's essentially what I said, or for the SAT, more just perfect score.
Does it take as long to receive the scores for the SAT?
Yeah, I think so.
So then those come in, mom says something that we can't repeat on TV. What did you say?
More just disbelief, like, I had to get the website to check it out for myself. Again, I wasn't right there, but I didn't believe her at first when she said I had to go search up the website by myself to prove it to myself.
Anyone care to share what they got on the ACT or SAT?
Low score, right?
See, I thought it was like golf. Low score is better, so... Besides mom and dad, grandma and grandpa, sis, who else did you share this news with right away?
There were just a few of my friends that I was around at the time and more people at school the next day, but there weren't many people that I really wanted to go tell right away.
But, I mean, clearly, a lot of people now know. Even people that you don't even know, know.
Yeah, I've had people tell me their entire class knew, even though I didn't tell anyone in their class, so that's been interesting.
Is it fair to say that your scores actually exceeded or equal the entire scores of the entire class?
Sometimes you would think that.
I can only imagine. So it begs the question, what do you want to do professionally?
I want to go into computer science.
Oh, such a waste, Reese, actually. Not theater?
So what do you want to do with computer science? Something like software development. Artificial intelligence seems interesting right now, that's been growing.
Indeed, it has been. I mean, is it fair to say you've already heard from schools throughout the country?
I don't know of anything specific. There's plenty and plenty of emails I get from various colleges, but I don't think I've heard from any specifically for that.
When mom sends out the video, you will.
You will, you will.
Tricks of the trade. You know, you see on TV all the time, "Take this course and do well." Are you gonna be appearing on these commercials?
I don't think I'd be a very good candidate for that. Honestly, I don't really have many tips that I'd be able to give people, aside from just take practice tests.
Well, Lori Loughlin had some good tips, but apparently didn't. What is your strength? Math?
Yeah, math and science more than, I guess...
What do you love about math and science?
Compared to English and that kind of stuff, I like that it has concrete answers versus you can take it for interpretation.
Nuance.
Yeah.
So the new math? Is there such a thing called new math?
Hmm.
There was when we were in school, remember that? That's why I did so badly. Yeah, exactly. So like, division and stuff, right? Where do you want to go to school, do you know?
I'm not 100% sure yet, but we visited a couple colleges up in Boston over spring break.
Anyone in particular, or...
We went to MIT, Harvard, and Northeastern.
Nice. Slacker. But you're gonna be shipping out of state, most likely, you think?
Um...
All depends, right?
Yeah, there's a few here that I need to look into. Still struggle to get into any of those schools, but it's quite possible.
Amazing, isn't it? Wow. So when you conquer the world of AI, you'll return to Geneva and perhaps speak somewhere and talk about from where it all began and...
Of course.
And your fee would be waived? 50%. No wonder you got a perfect score for it. Any comments or questions from any one of the dais? Oh, god. Guess what this guy does for a living?
I have no idea.
He administers the ACT. No, he doesn't, I'm just kidding. Alderman Clements.
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations, that's an incredible accomplishment. So I'm curious, just if you mentioned AI and computer science, I would guess, just based on what you're saying, you probably already work on some toy projects. What applications are you interested in? Are you doing convolution networks? What frameworks do you use? Showcase yourself on video here, use it later.
Well, I guess I've done the two computer science classes through the Geneva High School that they offer, but even before that, I'd been working on my own in different languages, like Python and Java are the two main ones I've worked in. Yeah, a lot of the last course focused building Android apps in Java, so that's been the bulk of it also. Just kind of messed around with website building through PHP and other things like that, so that's been a lot of just seeing what works and just testing stuff out for myself.
That's really great. You know, it's a rapidly emerging field, you know, and you say AI instead of machine learning, you know, which used to be kind of statistics and data analysis, it's all just going incredible places, so it's a great time to be getting into what you're getting into, and I hope you have a lot of fun, and with the mind like yours, I'm guessing you'll be able to do a lot with it, so congrats.
Thank you.
You know, Reese, this is the first time in the history of Geneva City Council meetings that we've actually had closed caption, because what you and Clements were talking about...
(laughter)
PHP, whatever, Python. Don't you still have a computer program where it says "if, then, go to"?
Similar.
No longer used? Anyone else? Alderman Ruby. Then McGowan.
Much simpler. Congratulations first.
Thank you.
I am shocked that those with the perfect score have the same notification as the rest of the people that take the test. You don't get any special notice?
I think the ACT might have sent a cer... Like, a special letter. That was about it.
Do you have it framed?
No, I don't know where it is now.
All right, that's all I had to know. Thank you.
It's like the clearinghouse, they come to your door and... Congratulations. Alderman McGowan.
Thank you, Mayor. My congratulations to you. It's really an amazing accomplishment, and we're really proud of you. You're representing Geneva, whether you like to or not, but we're really just amazed by your accomplishments, and thank you for coming here tonight with your family. I believe I played banjo years ago with your mom. Do you guys happen to live in Mill Creek? Uh, no. Or, okay. Oh, well, anyway, I recognized the name and then I Googled. That's how I knew.
Ah. See, the world knows, man, it's ungoogled.
Yes, and so I thought that was really amazing. I'm gonna ask a question that is not as complicated as Alderman Clements' questions, yet he might not know what I'm talking about. Do you still have time in your schedule to play Club Penguin?
Well, it has been shut down, so that's a bit of a damper on that, but...
But it's back. It's secret, though. So, okay, just, it's still there, in case you were wondering.
Okay, whoa. What is Club Penguin?
It's a game that, I guess, kids of your age played about 10 years ago.
Probably.
And it was owned by Disney, and it was shut down, but now some creative minds, college-age students have brought it back. So it's like the new big thing now, because everyone's connecting, and they say they used to play it 10 years ago when they were eight years old, so... But congratulations to you. It's really exciting to have you here, and I wish you very well in your future endeavors.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? So mom and dad, this is genetic, obviously.
Obviously not.
From grandpa, yeah. Did you take the ACT, grandpa?
I forget.
Did you? That is a good answer, man. We can edit the tape if you'd like, us two. Well, Reese, we've got a token of our recognition for you, if that's okay.
Okay.
Okay. And there's intentional misspellings, let's see if you can find them. It's a certificate of recognition that reads, "The city of Geneva is proud to recognize Reese Gosain for earning a perfect score of 36 on the 2019 ACT and a perfect score of 1,600 on the 2019 SAT. Congratulations on your achievement and best wishes for your continued success." Look at that. I'll bring it to you, big guy. So this rub off, I shake your hand, that's like...
Maybe.
You think so?
Yeah, if we find out.
Check this out, let's face stepping here. Grandpa, get out of the way. Pretty cool, huh, guys?
All right, here, please. Okay, one, two, three. Thank you.
Can you text me one, mom?
Yes.
May I Instagram it? It's okay? Pretty cool, man.
Thank you very much.
You can do anything you want now, man. I'm not gonna challenge you.
Reese, did you go to Harrison, too?
Yes.
Harrison alum?
Yeah.
It's pretty cool that you knew the percentage of kids who got a... Or students, excuse me, who got a perfect score. Is that the first thing you looked up?
Pretty much.
He just calculated it while he was sitting there.
He probably did. "I gotta see me." What does that mean? How you doing, Mr. City, is there any... Let's see, is our frie... Oh, yes, good. Life is good. Item 3C, folks, is to recognize outstanding... Or, excuse me, outgoing board and commission members, I believe. Madam Dawkins? We have a list of those who we are recognizing this evening?
Yes.
Correct?
Regrettably, only one can join us tonight, but I do believe everyone's name is worth reading. From the Strategic Plan Advisory Committee, Jennifer Main. She served from 2012 to 2019.
Barb Merrill, on the Strategic Plan Advisory Committee, served from 2012 to 2018. Art Candel, Zoning Board of Appeals. Ready for this, folks? 1988 to 2019. Pretty impressive, isn't it? You might also remember Mr. Candel, he was hired by the city to help oversee and serve as liaison to the business community during the Third Street Reconstruction. Remember those days? No? Reese, do you remember those days? Reese actually designed the street. And we do have with us the immediate past chair of the Strategic Plan Advisory Committee, Elizabeth Clements. Elizabeth, come on up to the podium. It's a tough act to follow, isn't it?
Indeed.
So I trust you just came from class.
These are just my everyday street clothes, yes.
Is it?
Yes.
Any comments you'd like to make about your service?
It was an honor to serve the city, and I learned a lot, and I'm proud of the work that we did as a committee.
Indeed. Anyone on the dais, any comments for the chair? Yes.
Elizabeth, I know how much work went into the strategic plan.
It's, you know, I came on and we had the old one, and to see that new one be created with the community involvement, and it's a true roadmap for us going forward. It's something people... Everybody in the community can dive into and understand, and was really helpful in our strategic planning session in November, where we came together and figured out what our priorities are for the coming year, and it's just like a wonderful document, and I could see your communication experience on every page of that document. So thanks so much for your hard work. We'll be... I know you're leaving, this is spec, but like, your, you know, influence is gonna be felt for years to come, so good work.
Thank you, thank you.
Anyone else? Except for you. Alderman Clements.
Thank you, Mayor. Everybody knows I'm probably a little bit biased, but...
Why is that?
I don't know. I want to say also thank you very much, you did an outstanding job, and frankly, to be honest with you, in the years running up to my involvement with the city at this level, I learned a tremendous amount through your involvement, seeing what you did, you coming home, talking about your meetings, and learning so much about the city before I even took a dip in the pool, so I want to thank you for that. So thank you very much for your service.
Thank you, and get ready for a two-minute horse dance on Wednesday.
We're in the same class. For everybody, for the...
So what belt are you wearing?
We're all the same rank right now.
And it should be noted that none other than Mikey is here tonight, is it? Mikey, how are you, man? Elizabeth, I have... We have a token of appreciation for you as well. May I? Item 3D, ladies and gentlemen, is to recommend the mayor's 2019-2020 board and commission appointments and reappointments. Is there a motion to so approve, based on the information you have in your packets? Alderman Burkhardt makes the motion, Alderman McGowan makes the second. See you, guys. Any questions, any comments? All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Let the record show that the vote was nine affirmative. Zero nay votes and one absent. Item 4, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Item 5 is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council and can be considered and acted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion? Alderman Clements makes the motion to approve the omnibus agenda.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Swanson. I'm not used to the new seating arrangements, sorry. Any questions, comments? Mr. Clerk, please take the role.
Bruno.
Aye.
Burkhardt.
Aye.
Clements.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Caven.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Malodra.
Aye.
McGowan.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye. The omnibus agenda passes with nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. We skip down to item number 10, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our clerk to read the bills in their aggregate.
Total bills, $3,042,894.95.
Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read the individual items that add up to that amount and can be found in tonight's packet on the city website.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion to pay the bills as presented, which are also available in our packets and on the website, and it should be noted that $3 million was primarily for the award we gave to Elizabeth Clements. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Ruby. Questions or comments? Mr. Clerk, please take the role.
Bruno.
Aye.
Burkhardt.
Aye.
Clements.
Aye.
Aye.
Caven.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Malodra.
Aye.
McGowan.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye. Item 10 passes with nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. We skip down to item 12A, recommend resolution number 2019-56, amending the regular committee of the whole schedule. As is always our practice, I will defer to City Administrator Dawkins for a preamble prior to discussion and a vote.
Okay, so the resolution before you tonight would approve a temporary change to the committee of the whole meeting schedule, from meeting from the 2nd and 4th Monday to the 1st and 3rd Monday immediately following the city council meeting. That would allow the 2nd and 4th Mondays to be reserved for policy discussions, special city council meetings, and other joint meetings with the boards and commissions. We talked a little bit about this at our mini camp retreat a couple weeks ago, but it's trying to be mindful of the time that you spend, not only in the meetings, but also outside of the meetings, and trying to just make the best use, and also give you more time to have more policy discussions without having to find another date. So the idea is that this would be temporary, to see how it works. The proposal, the resolution puts it through December, but we would discuss it in November at our strategic planning workshop.
Is there a motion?
And begins with our first meeting in June, on June 3rd.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion.
Thank you.
Alderman Malodra makes the second. Any questions or comments from the dais? Alderman Burkhardt.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, you know, change is always scary to someone like me, but I'm excited to try this out and to reserve those 2nd Mondays for either really policy discussions or really meaty issues that we feel like deserve to kind of kick off the evening at 7 o'clock and not have to wait till the end. I think it'll be good for the public, 'cause if there is an issue that they're really interested in, it could be... We can make sure that it gives the time, and at least that... I think we're good about always giving the amount of time. We continue things as needed, but to maybe start the discussion hopefully earlier in the evening, so... And I'm glad we're gonna have a few months to try it out before we reconvene and talk about it in November, so that's why I'm in favor of this tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else on item 12A? We have a motion, we have a second. Mr. Clerk, please take the role.
Bruno.
Aye.
Burkhardt.
Aye.
Clements.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Caven.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Malodra.
Aye.
McGowan.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye. Item 12A passes with nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. Item 12B, folks, is to recommend ordinance number 2019-07, amending the Fabian Crossing Plan Unit Development, ordinance 93-45, 2003-2020, 2017-10, and resolution 2018-01, and granting final planned unit development plan approval for a 4,256-square-foot drive-through restaurant and associated site improvements on Lot 1. Is there a motion? Clements makes the motion.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Bruno, and we turn the floor over to City Administrator Dawkins for a preamble.
Okay, thank you. Oberweis Derry is seeking approval to construct and operate a sit-down and drive-thru... a sit-down and drive-through restaurant on Lot 1 of the Fabian Crossings planned unit development. The proposed changes include amending the Fabian Crossing PUD permitted use list to allow sit-down and drive-through restaurants on Lot 1, amending the Fabian Crossing PUD final site plan and parking requirements for Lot 1, amending the PUD sign standards to allow facade signage on Lot 1 Outlet, and amending the final PUD landscape plan to allow a restaurant to develop on Lot 1 and 5 approving a final PUD site plan for Lot 1 outline, Outlet. The proposed Outlet by Oberweis would include a sit-down drive-through Oberweis Ice Cream and Dairy store and sit-down restaurants, that burger joint, and wood grain pizza. All three concepts would share the building under one lease with shared parking, bathrooms, and eating areas. At the plan commission meeting on May 9th, representatives from Lot 4 and 5 opposed the Oberweis Outlet. The objections were based on private covenants related to drive-through restaurants in the shopping center. The plan commission unanimously recommended approval of the application as presented. The city council has received copies of written protests from the objectors in accordance with the Illinois Municipal Code. Uh, the council has also had the opportunity to review the minutes and view the video from the plan commission meeting. The protest from Dial Realty does trigger the requirement for a two-thirds majority vote of all aldermen holding office, so therefore this evening, the item will need a seven affirmative, affirmative votes in order to pass.
Questions from the dais? Hearing none, seeing none. Mr. City Clerk? Please take the roll.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhart?
Aye.
Clements?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kabin?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Malodra?
Aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Item 12B, folks, passes with nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. Item 12C is to recommend ordinance number 2019-08, granting a sign variation in the Fabian Crossing planned unit development to allow a 76 square foot sign on a secondary building facade for Lot Number 1, address of 2,100 South Randall Road, proprietor At Home. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion?
Second.
And Alderman Ruby makes the second. City Administrator Dawkins?
Sure. At Home recently renovated the former Gander Mountain space at the Fabian Crossings Shopping Center, which is located on the west side of Randall Road and north side of Fabian Parkway. At Home is seeking an additional sign on the north facade to provide greater visibility for the store patrons that are already in the shopping center. The applicant's name is on four freestanding signs surrounding the shopping center and has 297 square feet of facade signage facing Randall Road and 118 square feet of facade signage facing Fabian Parkway. The only area where At Home signage is not visible on the site is along the drive aisle immediately in front of the buildings after a patron has already entered the shopping center. The requested sign area, 76 square feet, the applicant is seeking, is significantly less than what would be allowed on a primary building frontage of this size. Uh, the plan commission recommended approval of the proposed sign variation by a vote of six to two, um, at their last meeting.
We have a motion by Bruno, a second by Ruby. Any questions or comments from the dais? Seeing none. Alderman McGowan?
Thank you. Um, so just so that everyone is aware, can Stephanie, you recap what the reasons were for the, um, two dissenting votes?
I'll leave that to David since, uh, plan commission falls under his purview.
Our Director of Community Development, Mr. David DeGroot?
Good evening. Um, so the two dissenting votes, uh, I believe they did not feel the first standard for the sign variation and the, um, whether or not there's a particular hardship present, um, that required relief to allow the sign. Uh, they didn't feel that that standard was met because they felt the, the store had visibility with the signs facing Randall, Fabian, and then the existing freestanding signs in the center.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Alderman Kilburg?
This will be for Dave as well. Uh, was this topic approached during the initial zoning? In other words, was there a request or was there some consideration to this additional signage at that time?
There wasn't at that time. Um, I think once they had occupied the space and, uh, been operating for a while, they noticed that that wall was kind of blank and when you come out of Fresh Time or Burlington and you look down, you can't really recognize what the store is from that vantage point.
So, something they realized sort of after the fact?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? We have a motion, we have a second. Mr. Clerk, when you're ready, please take the roll.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhart?
Aye.
Clements?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kabin?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Malodra?
Aye.
McGowan?
Nay.
Swanson?
Aye.
Item 12C passes with eight affirmative votes, one nay vote, and one absent. Let's, uh, take care of new business, folks, prior to adjourn to closed session. Is there anyone in the audience tonight with any new business they'd like to share, questions they'd like to ask? Yes, welcome.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi, I'm Chris Bordage at 318 Anderson Boulevard, and I recently sent last week an invitation for all of you for our Diamonds in the Rough show at Even Flow, and I'm hoping that all of you can attend. Um, I appreciate and thank the responses that I received from the aldermen and the mayor, um, with the support. Unfortunately, the, the people that responded couldn't attend, but I'm hoping that, um, I'll see a lot of you there because it should be a nice, fun event that kind of brings the community together and it kind of promotes the diversity and inclusivity that we are looking for in Geneva, so I just wanted to thank you and, um, hopefully you'll be there.
Thank you very much.
So, thank you.
Anyone else? From the dais? If not, I'll entertain a motion, folks, to go into closed session on collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Bruno, seconded by Swanson. Roll call vote, Mr. Clerk.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhart?
Aye.
Clements?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kabin?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Malodra?
Aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
We've been approved to adjourn to closed session, folks, with nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. There is no action taking place following this meeting. We expect not to be too long, so if you'd like to stick around, please do. We'll see you in just a few.